Good evening. I'd like to call the December 17th, 2012 School Board meeting to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And before we do the roll call, I'd just like to make a comment. If I could paraphrase President Obama, "We can't tolerate this anymore. These tragedies must end, and to end them, we must change." We will be told that the causes of such violence are complex, and that is true. No single law, no set of laws can eliminate evil from the world or prevent every senseless act of violence in our society. But that can't be an excuse for inaction. And if there is even one step we can take to save a child, a teacher, or a parent in Holman, then we must do it. As a member of the Holman School Board, and I'm sure my colleagues feel the same, it weighs heavily on our minds that we're responsible for the well-being of more than 3,000 young people each and every day in our community. I have every confidence that our teachers, our principals, our staff would be just as heroic as those in Sandy Hook, and I pray that they never will have to exhibit that heroism. On behalf of the school district of Holman, I send condolences to the Newtown, Connecticut community. May you find strength in knowing that the country is behind you and our hearts ache for you all. Would you please honor a few moments of silence in memory of those young people? Mrs. Tredway, if you would do the roll call, please.
Here.
Nina Jagninsky?
Here.
Kate Mayer?
Here.
Tim Mettinger?
Here.
Fran Schwanberg?
Here.
myself, here.
Gary Dunlop?
Here.
Okay, with seven of the seven school board members present, I would declare a
quorum. Approval of the agenda. I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda at this time? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as published. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Recognition and thank you, Dr. Carlson.
Thank you. Dr. Tronstad had notified us of a donation on behalf of CenturyLink, which Prairie View and actually, I think, the high school, part of the DECA program as well, had received a number of three-ring binders and organizers and hanging folders, and so we thank Century Link for their ongoing support of our students and staff in our school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Public participation. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? I see no one coming forward, so then we'll move on to reports and discussion. Dr. Carlson.
Thank you. Tonight, we ask the board to approve a revision in the funding support by the school district for the girls hockey co-op program. I'll ask Activities Director Mr. Engler to make his way up here, but I'm going to make a few more comments. Recently, we discovered an inequity in funding between the girls program and boys program. While Activities Director Mark Engler has spent a great deal of time researching the history and background of each program specific to the agreements originally presented to the board in the past, the recommendation this evening is not intended to focus on decisions made in the past, but rather address an issue we believe that does need to be corrected at this time. The two programs have separate co-op agreements with different participating schools, and the programs were started at different times. Those of you who've been on the board for a while, remember perhaps both of those. These variables may or may not have contributed to the inequity issue or when discovering it as far as what we have with us today. To our knowledge, a similar inequity within the same sport between the boys program and girls program does not exist in any other sport or activity. Mr. Engler will provide a few additional remarks, but is here to respond also to any of your questions. It is our recommendation that the board take action on this item tonight as part of the consent agenda in order to respond to this issue in a timely manner. We have reviewed the recommendation with legal counsel and have been advised it will satisfy Title IX requirements, which currently are in question. This recommendation only applies to the remainder of this, the 2012-13 season. A long-term solution has yet to be developed. It is possible a solution beyond this season will be different than what is recommended to you this evening. Also important to note with this recommendation presented to you this evening for your consideration, this will not result, likely will not result, in participants in the boys program and participants in the girls program having equal costs. And that is primarily due to difference in expenses, for example, number of coaches, but also really driven by the number of participants between the two programs. I perhaps have said a lot already. I don't know if Mr. Engler has additional comments, but also give him an opportunity to then take any questions you have. Note, this is on the consent agenda for your consideration tonight.
Well, Mr. Carlson did a very good job of summing up, I think, what happened. We are part of two different co-op programs with two different school districts, and I think just naturally by each of those school districts being the lead school and not Holman, we were following their ideas of how to set up the co-ops at those time periods. And it just naturally set a distinction between what we were doing with the boys and what we were doing with the girls. And as I've started to learn about co-op programs and delve into the details of them, I discovered that there was a difference, and I felt that we needed to address that, and that's why we're here tonight.
And I believe there was just a couple slight revisions-
Yes.
-in the issue paper that was originally put out, but it has been updated, so whatever's on the Dropbox is updated, and also I think we put some hard copies in your folder of the revision as well.
The only thing that changed were the dates in which the co-ops were developed. The original dates that I was told from the ADs weren't quite correct, and I asked them to go back and look in their records, and they corrected that.
Will this result in any changes in what the students are having to pay?
It will for the girls program. If we are going to try to create an equitable situation between the boys and the girls by contributing the $6,417.96, that will reduce the amount per skater that the girls are paying.
So it won't increase? I mean, that would be a negative thing to increase the amount that they would be, or that the boys may have to pay, so.
Correct. That would have been another way to address the problem would have been to raise cost for the boys hockey program, but we felt that since we were in season already, we'd made commitments to the coaches, that that wouldn't have been a very fair way to approach the problem.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
And then the bus purchase. Mr. Saxton is making his way over.
I know you've received information on the results of the bus bids. There are a lot of bids there, and they have to be gone through to determine what best fits the school district of Holman. And I looked for equipment that fit within our budget because that's always been a priority. Also, equipment that has long-term benefits for the districts, and some of those things are air brakes, air doors, air stop arms. We try to get away from electrical components whenever possible because they have a higher fault rate, require more maintenance, and are not as effective over the long term. Also, the bid that I'll be recommending was the best bid with that type of equipment when the bids were initially presented, and after I went through the quotes and adjusted the other bids so that they had very similar equipment, it was still the best bid for our school district. And so I'll be asking tonight to approve the purchase of two buses, each bus costing $91,380, for a total expenditure of $182,760. Earlier this year, you heard me talking about the possibility of us receiving a grant with additional funding for buses, and I want to let you know that that grant was submitted. We've received acknowledgement that it was submitted, which I always think is a good thing because it's the first time that I've attempted this. So that made me feel positive. There is no guarantee that we're going to win what is essentially the bus lottery, and there's a little extra steps in there that if, for example, Wisconsin was to have its name drawn X number of times more than any other state, they reserve the right to reduce the number of awards in one state to even it up geographically. So it was a very small margin of hope that we received the grant. It's still out there. If that should happen, I'll come back to the board, and we'll discuss what alternatives we have at that time. And we should know that within, from about the 15th of January to the 30th of January, that we would receive that information. But in the meantime, we have to make plans for next year and the future based upon what we know and understand, and that is the budget that we have in front of us to purchase buses, and that's why we decided to go ahead at this time, so that we can get these buses in place before the school year is over. That's one of the reasons it's being brought to you tonight, because these are new buses. They have to be built. We've requested an April delivery date to make sure that they fit within this fiscal year, but I know how manufacturing goes, so that gives us a little safety before the end of the school year so that we can have our vehicles in place and have them in use. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Just a question. As I look at the issue paper here, I see the recommended bid here, I believe, is $91,380 per bus from the vendor Bill Cunningham. And then when I look at the bid sheet, can you help me with which bid that is? Because I don't see that on the bid.
The $91,380 includes adjustments for equipment that was not specifically, was asked for in the bid, was not specifically added. The bulk of that cost is for six seatbelt restraining seats that we've added to each bus. Also, a couple more additional storm windows. When they usually build these buses, they don't put storm windows very far back on the sides because of the coolies that we operate out of and the fact that some of our roads come together at less than a 90-degree angle. It's really beneficial to our drivers to be able to see better at certain angles through the side windows, and that's why we requested that additional equipment. It actually was in the original bid specifications, but they chose not to put it in, so I adjusted it for that equipment. And if you'd like me to go into the actual bids, Jim, I can-
No, I just was looking here because I didn't see that dollar amount corresponding to any of the bids, and that's-
That's why that dollar amount went up a little bit from what it was originally.
Okay.
Point of clarification for the board members. So on the issue paper, it says vendor Bill Cunningham, but that's really listing under the representatives in attendance at the bid opening. Correct, Roger?
Right. That wasn't a designation of accepted bid.
So could you clarify for the board, the vendor, that the purchase is-
The purchase is going to be from Wisconsin Bus Sales of DeForest. They did not have a person in attendance at the meeting when the bids were open. Mr. Cunningham's name was only mentioned because he was in attendance.
Oh, okay. So the recommendation will be the bus for the price identified from Wisconsin Bus Sales, correct, Roger?
Correct.
So the $182,760.
Yes.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, then budget development. Then initial budget outputs. Jason. Mr. Austin.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. The next step in the budget development event calendar is the initial budget output tonight. Now, this isn't final budget numbers, of course, because this is a fluid process. So tonight, I present, you know, the next step, the output based on, oh, thank you, Mr. Clark. Wait just a second until we get this up here. So the output tonight from a very broad view is based on the initial budget input variables that were approved on 12/10 of 2012. I would like to remind everyone again that this is a fluid process aimed at involving both the board, the leadership team, to create opportunities for feedback, to promote transparency, and support data-driven decision-making as well. So tonight, on the agenda, we're going to briefly cover the budget calendar overview. We're just going to talk briefly about where we've been, where we are currently, and some of the next important steps that we're going to look at here in the very near future. Then we're going to look at the input variables and the output that was generated from that. That output includes many, many pages of information, but tonight, we're going to strictly look at how that output applies to our fiscal performance results measures. Setting the stage at this point in looking at the performance results measures, laying the groundwork, going forward, knowing that we're going to have to look at unfunded needs, underfunded needs. We're going to have to evaluate the current one-time allocations that we have in this year's budget, and how all these different things, the output, the unfunded needs, underfunded needs, one-time allocations, in consideration of the fiscal performance results measures, and how that's going to impact those so we can make good decisions come January and February on some of those unfunded needs and those underfunded needs, or what are we going to do with those one-time allocations that we have currently in the budget that we've cast forward for the time being in the initial output. So looking at those two major categories tonight, and then we'll wrap it up, open for discussion, feedback from you folks if you have any other direction that you would like us to take, and open for discussion. Okay, so getting into, and I kind of chuckled in doing this tonight because I was thinking about Christmas, past, present, and future, and here we're going to kind of talk about the past. Figured this is the time to do it. Budget development events. So looking at the budget development events, we've already focused on the input variables. There was a lot of good discussion on that, good feedback, back and forth. So that on 12/10, we've presented those and approved those. From there, I was able to take that information and go back and really start crunching the numbers. And what does that mean? Well, that means, you know, looking at the various fund revenues by each fund, Fund 10, Fund 27, the debt service fund, nutrition service fund, looking at all those revenues based on those assumptions, looking at our working capital needs, projecting the mill rate impact, and assembling those projected needs. So it was very important to get those assumptions out, approved on the table, so we could continue internally doing what we need to do to move forward in the budget development process. Then we've got present and future here. So tonight, step seven, part A, looking at the best estimated budget based upon these budget input variables that were so important to approve on the 10th. So looking at, you know, the revenues and expenditures, the mill rate, such things as comparative per pupil expenditures, Moody rate, how is the output at this point going to impact those key measures for the district? Based on that, then, we're going to set the stage tonight, looking at those measures. Then we're going to start incorporating, okay, the list of unfunded and underfunded needs, and include that, and how will those impact our fiscal performance results measures? We've also got these one-time allocations that were granted this year, transportation, technology, curriculum, those things that are currently built into this budget for next year, but our one-time allocations, what are we going to do with those? Are those going to be reduced to fund future recurring needs, unfunded needs, underfunded needs, and so on and so forth? So looking at those things. And that's the work that we have yet to come, and that'll take place much in January, so involving the leadership team at that point in time and also the board at that point in time as well. Only thereafter can we really start finalizing that preliminary budget, come April or January 14, looking at strategies. Do we have a deficit at that point in time? Do we have a balanced budget, or do we have a surplus budget at that point in time? So that's what is yet to come, and where much of our work will be in the future. Okay, now to look at the impact of this output and all those assumptions that were made and estimates that were made in those initial input scenarios, looking at how that impacts our fiscal performance measures. First and foremost, looking at the comparative per pupil expenditures, then taking a look at the gross school tax rate. What might we be levying in the future? The fund balance. That output, what impact does it have on our fund balance? Adjusted gross income per return, taking a look at that as well. Equalized property value, and last but not least, our Moody's investment rating. So starting off, looking at the comparative per pupil expenditures at this point in time based on that output. If you look here, you're familiar with this chart. We've got charted the MVC average, the state K through 12 average, and then Holman, which is that blue line. It's tough going forward, looking at other districts. We don't have all the recent data for the other districts, the MVC average districts and the state average at this point in time. Much of this information we use, we gather from the Wisconsin Taxpayers Alliance, but knowing what the output is at this point in time for Holman, we can project with a fairly reasonable assurance the 1112, the 1213, and the 1314 for us. So if you look here in 2010-11, that was a high point. That year, we had comparative per pupil expenditures of approximately $10,400. And remember, the comparative per pupil expenditures strip out such things as debt service, transportation expenditures, to try to isolate just what we spend on education so we can compare ourselves to other districts statewide. So you notice there's a big dip here in, from 1011 to 1112, that was the change in Act 10. All school district expenditures went down. Ours went down. The cost of our WRS payments, the benefit for employees, that went down. The result of that, then, is a decrease in expenditures. Well, as benefits and salaries and other expenses continue to climb, notice the per pupil expenditures continue to increase each and every year then. So a low point here of approximately $10,094 to $10,380 in 1314. This is still within the range of the target minimums established that the board and the finance committee has approved, though. Any questions on the comparative per pupil expenditures? Okay, the gross school tax rate. So similar chart that has been presented in the past, MVC average, Holman, and the state K through 12 average as well. If you know our, see our target measures here, our upper limit and lower limit in red for Holman are here, and then the state, lower and upper limit in black here. In 1112, we're right in the middle of that, sitting pretty good in 1112. We're at 1123 in 1112. This year, it bumped up a little bit to 1140. That puts us on the higher end of our target measure. However, next year, based on that revenue limit formula, we're going to, we're anticipating receiving less aid from the state. Remember, in that bucket scenario, if we receive less aid from the state and our revenue limit capacity only grows so much, the balance of that revenue must come from somewhere, and the balance ends up coming from local sources. And we're anticipating the local source being driven up slightly to approximately $12.16 from a current rate of 1140. So it's something to keep in mind in the discussions going forward, looking at underfunded needs, unfunded needs, some of the one-time allocations, those types of things in relation to expenditures, and what can we do in the absence of, you know, more state aid? Can we do something more on a local level? Can we use debt defeesence? There's different strategies that we can use, but keeping it in mind that we're anticipating that to grow upwards of $12.
This would include all, so it includes about $2 that we have for our referendum, our capital improvements.
Yes, that's a great point Ms. Hancock is making. She's saying this includes our debt service, the levy for debt service, this includes our general fund levy, this includes all of our levies. So this is the total levy or gross levy that we levy. You know, and traditionally, we've always levied to the maximum within the revenue limit formula.
But a question on this slide here is, as we look at the targets are relative to other school districts. And so with the understanding that the revenue from the state will be less, which is going to cause an increase in that projected school tax rate, the question I would have is if this is a comparison to our peers, what would cause us to go from within that range to the high end and looking like we may go out of that range next year? Because I would also assume that the state averages and the other MVC averages would, should also be having that same impact from the state. So we, our tax rate might be going up, but I would anticipate others would be going up as well. If we're going up at a different rate under the same variables, something must be different at Holman that may not be true in other districts. And my question is, is do we know what those variables might be that would cause us to go from the middle to now the top to looking like we might be going up? State variables should be the same for all districts.
Sure, sure. I think that's a great question. I think every district's a little bit different in their revenue limit formula and in the factors that go into that. On Alaska's, a different comparison, or their revenue limit formula is much different than ours, and so is La Crosse's, Sparta's, and Tom's, so everybody's a little different. I am anticipating each one of theirs to go up. Is it going to go up as fast as ours? Is it going to go up greater than ours? That is yet to be determined, but I would imagine that most of them will climb in relations.
One of the variables that is a little bit unique to Holman is, we talked about this, I think it was during the input variables. Our community seems to have held on to its property value a little bit better than around the state, and the amount of general aid that the school district of Holman receives as well as everybody else is dependent upon how property-rich you are. And because our property values have not gone down as quickly as the rest of the state, everybody else looks poor, and so it directs more of the state aid dollars to them, which- And so it directs more of the state aid dollars to them, which leaves more to be paid off property taxes here. The way the formula works is if you're more affluent, I don't, not saying we're affluent, but the formula describes is if we're affluent, we'll get less aid. So I would think that we may see a little bit more of this increasing effect than others around the state. But Jason's right, the rest of the state's going to adjust upward to some degree as well.
I think it's important that as a board, we're aware of our relative rank, because every year, right about tax season, usually right about January 1st, the local newspaper always does an article every year of what the mill rates were in the various municipalities and the changes year over year. And if we're sitting up here in Holman with a change that is maybe larger than somebody's else, that may draw some questions. So I think we just need to be aware of that, because it will get attention, because it always seems to be about this time of year, a pretty traditional article in the paper as the tax bills come out about, you know, all the various, what are the changes in the mill rate, up or down?
That's a fair point. And Jason points out, there's just a whole host of variables. You know, remember, the revenue limit is the three-year average. So if you're consistently increasing enrollment school district, the revenue limit's going to define things differently than some of our neighbors who are relatively static or others who are actually having gradually declining. And so those again are contributing variables that do make us a little bit different. Our debt service levy, that fact is we've constructed and have debt, is another factor.
And we just need to be prepared to tell that story if that, you know, that article comes out, because it's, you can tell the story, you just got to be able to tell it. Because if all of a sudden we're different, it's, you know.
Fair question. Why are we different?
Because we'll get it.
Doesn't the lack of an industry and lack of large retail businesses have an impact as well?
On a property, on a property value, yes, it does. That is, our property value isn't just measured as a gross number, but it's property value behind each pupil. And so when you have a mall, it doesn't send a lot, the mall doesn't send any kids to school. It's the houses that send kids to school. So you get a lot of value without the students to serve. And that's not Holman. We're lots of bedrooms.
Yeah, but that's, that's been a constant variable. So if all of a sudden it changes from one year to the next, that, that's been a constant variable. Whereas, you know, if something changes from period A to period B, that wasn't there prior to that, that's what I'm kind of looking at from a.
It is one that makes us unique, but it's not one that's changed quite as dramatically as this depreciation of property values, which is somewhat unique to Holman compared to the rest of the state.
And that's, that's something, I think that's more right now that's explainable. Thank you.
Good points. So, you know, one thing to definitely keep in mind, one of these measures that will definitely be a topic of conversation, you know, come January, when we're looking at, how are we going to fund these expenditures? Are we going to levy up to the maximum? Are we comfortable with $12? Are we comfortable with $1215? Those will have to be, you know, something to consider. And it, and this is why we're bringing these to you now, because these are more important factors to consider when we're in those conversations going forward, just putting in the back of your minds these measures, so.
One other, I, I'm sorry to go backtrack on this, but Mr. Mettinger's question made me think a little bit more. Remember last year, when we finished the end of our fiscal year, we had underspent our budget? Remember, your equalized aid for the following year is based upon how much you spent in the prior year. If we had fully expended, we would have received more equalized aid. And as Jason's describing, this growing revenue limit bucket, more of it would have been filled up with equalized aid than taxes. So that's another thing that's a little bit unique to us, last year to this year compared to some other school districts.
Thank you.
Okay, fund balance as a percent of total expenditures. Target measures here, we're well within our lower and upper goal limit. We peaked here in 2011-12, seeing a slight decrease. And that slight decrease could come from, for two different reasons. Remember, this is the fund balance as a percentage of total expenditures. So maybe total expenditures are increasing faster than our fund balance is increasing. Or potentially, our revenues are not exceeding our expenditures, causing our fund balance to decrease a little bit. For what we're forecasting next year, I'll touch base or go over a little bit in the next slide. But the fund balance, remember, helps support our cash flow needs and is pretty important to the district to support that. I'll share with you, the first time in my tenure here, our fund balance was enough to support our cash flow needs this year without doing any inter-fund borrowing. In the past, we've had to inter-fund borrow to support, you know, cash flow needs, daily operating needs. We have not resorted to external cash flow borrowing, like many districts have. We've been able to do everything internally, but this was the first year that we didn't have to inter-fund borrow from other funds. So we've got the fund balance to a point now where we're supporting our cash flow needs. Any changes to fund balance, dipping into fund balance, spending more, would potentially increase our shared costs for next year, getting back to Mr. Clark's point in, okay, while the following year, we'll get more aid based on that. However, dipping into fund balance though, does jeopardize our ability to pay cash for things and support our cash flow needs without inter-fund borrowing or external cash borrowing. Okay. Moment we've all been waiting for, ending fund balance. It's, it's really important, what is our beginning point at this time? And that's, that's so important, because so many people say, well, what is our, where are we at right now? Where are we going? Well, what's our beginning point? Where are we starting from? Well, right now, we're anticipating an ending fund balance of $9.2 million. That includes some one-time allocations to those programs I mentioned earlier. That includes the increases to salaries and benefits that we have for 1213. And that includes many other factors. So right now, we're anticipating this ending fund, fund balance off of 1213 of $9.2 million. That, that could change, that could become more or less, depending on what we spend this year. But this is what we're anticipating ending this year, which will be our beginning fund balance next year. The general fund revenue, we're anticipating to increase to $41,325,000. General fund expenditures will grow to $41,330,000, leaving an ending fund balance of $9.2 million. So a very, very, very slight decrease deficit at this point in time. This however, does not consider the sinking fund reservation, the monies we set aside in the sinking fund, and those expenditures as well. Right now, we're just casting forward our current expenditures in the sinking fund. So any changes there may increase or decrease that deficit. But a very minimal deficit at this point in time. But remember, that includes those one-time allocations cast forward into 1314. But that's part of the work that we have coming in the future in January, to look at those one-time allocations. Are we going to pull those back? Do those become recurring? What new unfunded or unfunded needs do we have in 13 and 14, in 1415 and going forward? So does everybody have a pretty good understanding of where we're at and what we're anticipating for 1314? So just reminders, cast forward right now. These input variables are based on our best estimates. These can change. I know there were some reservations in previous weeks. The input variables may need to change, depending on what we have for unfunded and underfunded needs in the future. It also includes the one-time allocations and the unfunded needs that we have to consider going forward too. Adjusted gross income per return, although our budget doesn't directly impact this, when we go to set the levy, the levy is important to consider, what is the gross income per return? What is the taxpayers, the local taxpayers' ability to pay? And what is, you know, economically sound to, to bring back to the taxpayers? Can we afford to go back and, and increase the levy? Well, it's too early to tell at this point, but, you know, when we go to set the levy in the future, the ability to pay is an important consideration, and it's something that we do monitor. At this point in time, I didn't update this, because it's, it's too early in the game to really update this. Include the school district equalized property value. Remember, the equalized property value is directly related to that mill rate. So depending on what the equalized property value comes in at, are we going to, we're anticipating a 1.14% increase for 1314. If it comes in greater than that, that's great, it's going to reduce that mill rate. If it comes in less than that, that mill rate could potentially climb. So it's an important thing. We don't have a lot of control over that, but yet it does play an important factor in where we set the levy, what that ending mill rate ends up at. Any questions on that? Okay, last but not least, the Moody's investment rating. In working with Moody's the last time in the refinancing of our bonds, you know, they said it's very tough to go up. We're very strong in the property value range of districts and, you know, relative to our side. If we want to get into the next bracket where our, our Moody's rating would actually improve, we would have to go up about $10 billion in property value. So the only place, Moody's said, where we could really go is we could either stay where we're at, or we could drop in our rating. And we would potentially drop in rating by a decrease in fund balance. Other factors such as valuation, if our valuation changes significantly, if our debt ratio changes significantly, if we start spending more than our revenues dipping into fund balance, all those things are going to play a factor and potentially jeopardize our, our current rating. And our current rating equates to a cost of capital when we go to finance projects, when we go to build new buildings in the future. So it's important to keep that in mind and keep a strong rating going forward. Anybody have any questions?
I have a couple. So what this is, according to the budget calendar, is you're sharing with us, using the input variables, then develop the best estimated budget based on those. This is how the 1213 budget could impact these performance measurements.
Right, right.
And so as a school district, I'm wondering where, and I know that these are measurements that we approved, but where is the measurement about performance, academic performance? And should that be part of all of the, the measurements, performance measurements that we approve? Because you could, we could look at this, approve a budget that could have a negative impact on student learning, but may glowingly do these things, but may negatively. So it's not a question I'm asking you to answer tonight, but it's just a thought that I had. And then as we look at the, the academic results that we're gathering this year, some of our input variables were done based on last year's outcomes. If we see a change in that, I think you, it was indicated, I tried to find the board meeting on the VTV, but I kept finding the old one that I was actually doing. But if the, the performance actually doesn't show the poor performance that, you know, was related to, referred to in the past, that we actually do very well based on some of those input variables, there is that flexibility, that adjustments can be made between now and when this is all approved, is what I'm, what I was seeing. And so I just wanted to kind of state that. That is a correct statement, right? That?
That would be correct. That's why we're moving the budgeting process up earlier in the year, so it gives leadership team and the board time to work together to, you know, monitor the different performance results measures, collaborate together, look at, you know, going forward, the various target measures and performance measures, and how to work towards not only the fiscal, but the educational ones and other results measures that have been established. Because the fiscal measures are only one dashboard, but we're also looking at, you know, and need to look closer and compare those to, you know, the educational performance measures as well.
And my understanding, and Wendy I see is in the audience, that those test scores, some of those measurements are scheduled to be coming out sooner in future years when Common Core standards are implemented. So in the fall, we actually might have some of those results versus now we're waiting until May and June, or May, I guess primarily, to get those results. So that will make it a better exercise as well. I just needed to, I, I think as we, our top priority is education and student performance, that maybe that, I know we're looking at performance measurements in even the HR personnel area, and should every area have that? I mean, that's what we're supposed to, or is it a given? And if it's not there, then sometimes it can get lost in discussions. I'll let you move on, sorry. Any other discussion?
I have one question, I hope you can answer in 700 words at last. And you mentioned in-house borrowing versus fund balance. What is the additional cost associated with borrowing in-house versus fund balance? It doesn't sound, upfront, it doesn't sound like a bad thing.
Yeah, inter-fund borrowing, we're, we're borrowing from ourselves to support cash flow needs. And as long as we have funds available, that seems to be okay. But remember, in the past, we, when we built Prairie View Elementary School, we had to do a little bit of inter-fund borrowing with some of the proceeds with, from that fund for the time being. Well, Prairie View was built and we no longer had those funds available.
The problem is you might not have the some funds available.
We might not always have those funds available as debt service. We continue to pay down according to our bond and payment schedule. That fund balance in, in Fund 39 becomes less and less each year. So the resources we have available become less and less. And when you exhaust those fund balances and other funds, we, we can't do that any longer. And knowing that, inter-fund borrowing is no longer an option, and that's why it's very important for the general fund to sustain itself.
Okay, thanks.
One thing that Mr. Austin didn't mention was the dollar amount, our low point. So, you know, we, he showed the beginning balance, $9 million that we have in June. Brianna was asking me, how does that? And I said, well, that's how much money you have on Wednesday when you get paid every Friday. It's not how much you have Friday morning, just before you get paid. Now, Friday morning for us happened at the end of November, October this year.
End of Novem, oh, it typically happens the end of November, as early as October.
At that point in time, a total expenditure budget of, how many million dollars in our district?
Forty, $39 million?
Forty million dollars. And we had how much in the bank on that day?
Um, $150,000.
Yes, and we're down to $150,000. So as I've got two bucks left in my wallet on Friday at lunch, is kind of where we're at. You can imagine if the flow of some expenses had worked out just a little bit different. I just mentioned that, because Mr. Dunlap's comments and sizing all this and knowing what we mean by not having to borrow, that, just really getting very close to not having to go to Payday USA to get through till Saturday morning.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Thank you.
Jason, just a clarification, January 14th, we're going to be asking the board for more of an acknowledgement of these and understanding of these. Correct? And actually through action, just to, it's kind of in, we talked about this earlier, just between the three of us, it's kind of like when we present the audit report, what, August? what, August, first part, somewhere in there, that, you know, it's, it's, it is what it is. Is that we bring it to the board for you to acknowledge it and we actually take it for action. So it still doesn't mean that at all, kind of, Miss Handtack, what you bring up as far as potential to change, it's just a step that we're saying, all right, kind of a checking point. Everybody with, everybody together on this? And so we'll be putting this on a consent item most likely for January fourteenth. Didn't want to do it for tonight, since we're just presenting it.
Great, thank you.
Okay, then Moody, moving on to board member reports and discussion. Board members have an opportunity to share reinforcement and committee reports in the order of rule call. So Mrs. Jay Gazinski?
We had a Personnel and Governance meeting last week. And since you're the chairperson, I will let you brief everyone on the details of that meeting. The only other thing that I had a comment about just was the shootings in Connecticut. I was decorating our house Friday night and walking around and listening to music, and I was thinking how lucky I was and how so many parents on the East Coast didn't have the same opportunity that night. And, you know, being on a school board, we, our responsibility first and foremost is to keep all these kids safe every day. And I just, you take it to heart as a parent and as a human being and as a board member when things like this happen. And I just, I feel lucky and horrified. And I hope that some things can change in our country. And my heart just really goes out to everyone in that community and those parents and the families and the staff members. And I pray that they have some kind of healing and closure and peace. And that's all I have.
Thank you. You're Mrs. Mayor.
Student achievement and learning did not meet in December. And that's good news because we're way ahead of schedule. And so we didn't feel that we needed a meeting in December. We were all really depressed that we couldn't go to another meeting, but we got over it shortly. Second item is many thanks to, to my, to our Prairie View staff today. Mrs. Tronstad arranged for me to come visit. And thank you to Brianna Schwabenbauer too, who's also working on that. And Dale has always mentioned to me as a new board member to make sure you visit your building. So I did that for the first time today. And I, I felt really honored to be there today in light of what Anita just said. The first item on the agenda was Mrs. Tronstad sharing with her staff what the district had come up with in terms of recommendations for elementary buildings. And it was just a proud moment to be there, to watch the faces of teachers who feel like all of us without repeating what's already been said. But it's a reminder again that these are, these are public servants. And public servants put their lives on, on the line in many, many different ways. And we've all read comments on Facebook from teachers and administrators. I read one from an administrator in a district that said, if that would ever happen in my district, there'd be a two-hundred-and-twenty-pound Papa Bear charging down the hall, just like that administrator. And I believe that that's what our people are too. A special thanks to Mrs. Fegan, whose classroom I was able to visit. She's a fifth grade teacher there with just a dynamic personality. The things her kids were doing were phenomenal. They were presenting oral presentations based on tons of technology. I won't go into all of the details, but the vibrancy of those fifth graders, their personality. Fifth graders are a little out there, if you recall what being a fifth grader is like. Their personalities were still allowed to be there, but their factual information about the topic they were presenting was spot on. So these were not stifled kids. They were, they were presenting to their peers in a marvelous way. Thank you to the cooks, to all the teachers that were there that came up and made comments to me. And, and to, to every person that I ran into, everybody was just so grateful for the visit. And I was grateful right back. So that was a very good morning and I appreciate that opportunity. There's more coming.
Thank you. Mr. Menninger?
Just a couple of quick hits tonight. First, Finance Committee, excuse me, not Buildings and Grounds Committee met earlier this evening. And I will defer to Ms. Tredway to give a report on that as chairperson. Secondly, in the mail, I think recently everyone would have received their tax bills. I think this board has done an absolutely great job, working very, very hard to be good stewards of that money. But as always, certainly welcome questions and encourage anybody with questions, come on out to, to our board meetings. Always love it when people come talk to the board. Third, had an opportunity, have spent a little bit of time in the gyms lately. There are some awesome Holman Winter Sports teams going on right now. And, you know, there's talk and snow coming, the nights are gonna get cold. Boy, what better way than to spend it in a gym cheering on Holman High School? So get out and watch the sports, just some great things happening out there. And then last thing, just to want to tell everybody, enjoy the winter break coming up here. Had an opportunity over the last couple of days, watched Miracle on Thirty-Four Street. And as a banker, I always like to watch It's a Wonderful Life. Sit down, watch a movie with the family, enjoy the holidays and Merry Christmas to everybody.
Which banker are you, Tim?
Yeah.
I think you're George Bailey.
Thank you.
Brianna?
I just wanted to say I went to the middle school play this weekend and they all did a wonderful job. They're so much fun to watch. The kids just get up there and they light up the stage. And also, when I walked into the middle school, I saw outside of the auditorium that some of the PBEIS teachers had created a kindness wall. And it is, there's different posters with different recommendations for different random acts of kindness you can do. And I thought that was the neatest thing. And it really represents how awesome our staff are for improving just the community and the school. It was just really cool to see. And also, I just wanted to also send my condolences to, to everyone who's affected by the tragedy that happened this past Friday.
Thank you. Mrs. Tredway?
Everyone, it's, I guess it's a fault of going last or near last all the time because everyone says what I've really wanted to say in terms of the country and in terms of the school play that I attended and, and different things. So I'll just comment on Building and Grounds and your notes are in the packet. And we met this evening, as Tim said. And we're still working on some unfunded maintenance solution proposals to bring to the board probably in the next few months.
Mr. Dunlap?
I'd just like to let everyone know we're not having a Finance Committee meeting this month. We're gonna skip this month because everything's under control, obviously. And then also liked to offer my condolences to the people in Connecticut. I, I have several grandchildren, I have two that are that age. And I had both of them on my lap, sitting there thinking, how, I just can't understand how that, how that must hurt. It just, it's, it just can't comprehend how that must hurt. And my heart goes out to those people in Connecticut.
Thank you. Mr. Gittens?
Everything's been said, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gittens. Well, the Personnel and Governance Committee, we have been studying some issues. One, of course, was contracted hours and benefit thresholds. And going to have, I think, a recommendation coming forward in Janu-
In January?
In January on that. And then also some policies that we've been reviewing. And we took a good amount of time with Janice, who is the expert that we utilize in the insurance side, and talked about some insurance, health insurance. And just beginning that discussion on what should we be looking at as a board? And what is the timing on that? And some just fundamental mission and vision kind of statements that we want to accomplish or what we want to accomplish. And really, it's like starting at ground zero by offering this as a benefit. What is the goal of offering this as a benefit? So that will help us, I think, as we move forward. And we will be bringing some more information in January on this. But I'm just beginning to think about that, that, you know, what is the purpose for us and any employer to offer this kind of benefit to their employees? And then, and, and then how do we want to move forward? And in further studying this, do we want to do it through the administrative channels? Or do we want to have bigger committees? And, and we're just kind of working out some of those details and thoughts that we want to work on first before we bring it to the full board. I would mention that WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, you've received their resolutions. It wasn't on, it's not on the agenda tonight for us to discuss. But certainly in January, take some time, look those over. Mrs. Mayor is our representative, as has been the practice in the past, is if we see anything as a board, as a group, that we want to bring and take a stand on, then we've usually brought those forward to a board meeting and said, yes, we want to take a stand on this particular one. But rarely does that happen. It's usually what happens is they go to, our representative goes to the meeting and listens to the discussion back and forth. And what we may anticipate could be very different from what happens in Milwaukee. So we've usually just allowed the representative vote, to vote on our behalf. But I do know from being that representative, some districts take very specific stands and they direct their representative how to vote. So if there are some resolutions that you feel that strongly about, please, let's have that discussion. And then just a reminder that we do have that special board meeting this Wednesday at seven o'clock. Mr. Vogler, it's nice to see your hair's growing out. I, I love the, the coverage, that was great. And then just, to continue, a couple thoughts I had related to those budget inputs. I, and I, I know that the input related to staffing, it is a concern of mine because, and I do respect the majority, but I just have some questions on that. I, I am concerned because I know that we have said we've reviewed area school districts and our numbers, our student to staff ratios are very low, yet test results don't show that it's been effective. And I worry about that because I think we know there are many things that go into affecting test scores, not just that one variable. And so my question is, if we do increase class sizes, which may not be affected by what we've done, but if that would happen, are we then going to be ready to change that variable in the next year? Or is there a certain number of years that we wait until we make that impact? And is that really a, an exercise that we want to, to do with our students? And can we identify other variables that we should be looking at then as a board? That, so that we don't just pull one thing out. I just worry about focusing on that one thing, that the numbers don't show, that we're not getting our money's worth or something, I think is the feeling. And that just concerns me. And those experimenting, it just, that's what it feels like, we're just experimenting on that. And what numbers are we gonna use? So if our numbers come back really good in May, then are we going to make the adjustments? Or do we wait, wait for a year? So there's so many questions that I have about that. And I, I am curious, especially at maybe the middle and high school level. We've seen the numbers in the past for the elementary level. But those core classes in the high school and, and possibly, you know, you could take a look at the middle school just to begin. But especially in the high school, core classes of English and math, where you see the most impact of the Common Core standards. Can you get those numbers for us of what those class sizes are right now? I mean, not tonight, but because anecdotally, what people have said to me is that those, those areas have high twenty-eight to thirty students in them. Well, some of our electives have much smaller numbers. And is this a time we need to start talking about that as a district? And saying, we need to focus on those core classes having a lower class size? And maybe we're going to have to double up some of those other options. And I think, Dr. Carlson, you've often talked about what is that minimum threshold that we offer classes? And maybe this is a good time. And maybe it's not the full board, maybe it's something that the Student Learning Committee looks at. But I just don't want to take one thing out of context if we're not gonna look at all of those avenues. And so just some thoughts I had. And, and then I will end by saying Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I don't think we come back until the, the next year or so. To the board, my fellow board members and the community, Merry Christmas. So other things, correspondence. Of course, you have received School Board Committee reports, Building and Grounds and Personnel and Governance Committee, board meeting schedule. Again, I would note that we have the meeting this Wednesday, January fourteenth is our next school board meeting. The twenty-second to the twenty-fifth is the WASB convention. The twenty-eighth is a board meeting and then into February, the eleventh and twenty-fifth. So District Administrator Report, Dr. Carlson.
Just going to take an opportunity to comment. You have my written report, including the happenings reports. Just want to, a lot of acknowledgements, comments made related to the past few days. Just want to acknowledge and thank personally the several members of our leadership team, our principals especially, and Ms. Krakow and others who I was able to rely on over the weekend and put some things in place. There was conversation, a lot of people don't even, usually aren't even aware of some of that. And so it's nice to be able to have a group to, even as they're out and about doing things, we came together and we were able to put some things in place. So thank you to those people. And then as I had reports from today and had the opportunity to also visit directly with some staff, again, our staff who, in the end, through the support of our principals and others, really came through today in our classrooms and appreciate their work during these difficult challenges. So thank you. That is it, unless you have questions.
Seeing none, then we would move on to the consent items. And we have a number of items on the agenda for consideration. And so it, there are no items to be pulled off. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items as presented. Is there anyone who would like to pull an item out?
Yes, I would like to pull out item eleven six.
Okay, eleven six, new courses, new courses proposals, okay? Any other items? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the consent items with the exception of eleven point six.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
And discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Then item eleven point six, new courses proposals. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented. And then we can discuss if we have the motion and the second.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I just have some, some brief discussion. First of all, kudos to our, our middle school principal. I really enjoyed the explanation you, you gave in terms of many courses that are offered as enrichment and the philosophy. And as a longtime member of the Wisconsin Middle Level Education Association, which I think is a great association. I, that helped me understand where you were coming from in terms of some of that explanation. So thank you very much for that. I did have a question for you though, just a clarification. I understand that if they, that if, let's see here. If they take three semesters, then they're allowed to take the placement exam. And if they pass it, then they can start at level two. I'll, I'll give you time to get up here. And then the second one says if they do not take three semesters, but they still pass the placement exam, they still have to take level one over again. Is that correct?
Okay, I'll go to your, your first question. They have the opportunity to take either world language, Spanish or French, one semester in seventh grade. And then if they choose to take both semesters in eighth grade, at that time, they're eligible, if you want to call it that, or they are able to take the placement exam. If they pass that placement exam, then they would be able to take level two at the high school.
Got it.
So all of, they have to do those two things, take all three semesters and pass the placement test.
Okay. But if they don't take three semesters, they still can take the placement exam?
No, they cannot.
Oh.
Yep, and if I miswrote that, they, they, they cannot-
Thank you.
-take that placement exam.
Okay.
If they only take one semester in seventh grade and one semester in eighth grade.
Thank you, okay. That, that's that explanation then, thank you very, very much. And then just another comment is I think down the pike, we're in kind of a time where I think, I love your philosophy, but then I also embrace the PLC of the, of the world language philosophies and looking at middle school kids and seeing if we're approaching a time where that could be tweaked a little bit. And I think, just encourage us as a district to see if there's something creative that can be done that doesn't crack or break embracing that middle level philosophy. embracing that middle level philosophy, but could something be nudged, or is there something we haven't maybe thought about to still give them a chance to maybe do some of the things that a few maybe of the other districts are doing? I don't know how many other districts there are, but I know there are some moving towards that direction, and if there's an opportunity for that to come up within the next year, I think the time might be ripe for your input on that, and then that, the PLC, which I, I really embrace that PLC model as much as I embrace your philosophy of middle school too, so I just think two beautiful things. If we could figure out how to work them together, it would be a cool thing, and just again, thank you for writing that up. I appreciate that.
Other questions?
I just, I, I guess I would like to eventually see, and maybe we've received this somewhere in some, one of the mountains of materials we have, but an overview of the, like, the current status of the whole district world languages program, the middle school, the high school, how they work together, and, and what the, the staff members who teach it every day, what their ideal world would look like if they could have it the way that they think would work best, what that would look like. I would, I would love to hear from them directly.
When they might have that.
It's actually a great time to ask that question because they are completing their self-study, so in February or early March, you will hear what they found out in their self-study and what their ideal program would be with recommendations.
With middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school.
And elementary.
And then, like, what the high school and middle school principals, what your input would be regarding their recommendations?
And to clarify, it would be K-12 or pre?
It's world languages, yes.
World languages, so elementary, because some school districts do provide those opportunities.
Yes.
So, what these programs or these classes are, or just class recommendations for this upcoming year, and more opportunities or, or options may actually come through as a result of that self-study and curriculum work that they're doing, and then at that time, so there could be additional changes or additions to the program, but this is just the initial, what's come through, the curriculum comes through.
And do those begin this semester, if approved tonight, this coming semester?
Next year.
It'd be next year.
And I know, I believe a question last, or a comment last board meeting alluded to the fact of staffing impact, and again, we, and I had a chance to meet with Principal Bear following last, the last board meeting to clarify some of that. Again, our, we try very hard to staff based on student interests, and that's not always possible, but we try very hard to do that. And at the same time though, from year to year, we try to remain some consistency in our staffing, so we don't have a lot of variance. In this case, we want to, I want to be clear though, there's a question about staffing increase, staffing decrease. Again, we're gonna let that to as much as possible be determined by the student interest. But if you, I think there was a comment made by our presenters about some of the challenges with our scheduling, possibly with this proposal, and it's important for everybody to know that our staff will still be scheduled fully and teaching the, the number of courses and classes that everybody else will do as well. And I think, again, that'll be part of the scheduling work that the staff will, will do with Mr. Bear and the administrative staff. So, again, I think Mr. Wopat may have made some comments about not right, not sure right now about how they're going to schedule opposite of skinny on certain, on a term or certain days, and so some of those things have to be worked out, but it'll be important for our staff to teach a, a full schedule.
And I didn't see, I, like I said, I looked for the board meeting and I kept not finding it, but could that mean that, though, that we don't have enough staff with his reference to that? Because I didn't see it.
Again, if we have great, if we have a increase in interest and staff, I mean, that's how we've usually handled things in the past. We'll do everything we can do, then come to you, looking at requests for increased staff. So, again, we try very hard to let that come down to that student selection process.
And it does sound, I think, this solution for the coming year sounds like it does really help kids that need this, so that they don't have to take over a whole course again, right? I mean, so coming from, I think it was Kari last week too, understanding that it does help the kids until we hear maybe other recommendations in the future or not. It's still gonna help the kids.
And can I go back to that staffing issue? Is it just at the high school where we do that, or do we do that at the middle school too?
My conversation is with, was Mr. Bear. I think there's, there's a little bit more, say this, flexibility in a sense to, at the high school, the way we schedule. After I asked Mr. Vogler, he's the expert on the middle school scheduling. But, and we've talked in the past, this might lead to, you know, overloads possibly, and if we don't have quite enough to maybe add a position, and you've been through, many of you, that discussion before, and we will get there as well. The middle school, again, I hate to make comments about, but maybe perhaps not as much of that flexibility, but Mr. Vogler?
When, when we work with the elective classes, the students have the opportunity in seventh and eighth grade to pick their electives based on ranking them, and so, based upon ranking those electives, we try our hardest to put students in their electives that they rank the highest, okay? Now, when that does happen, they, you know, not every class can be number one, and so you, we work our way down from really trying hard to get students in that first and second elective that they're really passionate about, and then taking their other classes and saying, okay, and this will fit into their schedule as well. Through that process, we, we have to use our staff fully with, with the numbers that are at the middle school. Those, those teachers are all used. It is very seldom that, that we have the opportunity to, to have a teacher that has many open spaces. So, through that process, yes, they are all, they are all used.
And when do they do that? Is that at this, or in January, February time of year, is it later in?
Yep, as soon as, as soon as the new year comes into play, we start talking to the students about those, you know, those sheets. We'll go home. Boy, that's, I think it was around February, March that those sheets, those sheets go home, and, and that's really where we do, we bring the students into the PAC, and we talk to them about, this is that time that, that we want you to be talking with your families about what is important to you at this time, and, and that's something that, that we spoke with, with our Foreign Language Department as well, talking about having those conversations at home, taking that in seventh grade, and then in eighth grade, that if that is a passion of yours, that is something you want to look at, making sure you do put that on your schedule for that first and second choice, so that you do have that opportunities.
Thank you for going through that. I know that the middle school scheduling has changed much since my children were through it. The high school is still the same. I find that that's, so I understand how they register at the high school, but the middle school has changed, so thank you for sharing that.
Anytime.
Any other questions?
I guess, I just got a sense of frustration from the teachers who were presenting that in the middle school, when the kids drop or don't complete all the required sequence of the courses and then end up basically retaking it in Level 1 in the high school, it does kind of seem like a waste of resources for the kids, and I know in the board information we got, you kind of referred to it as like it, almost like a refresher, that they should have to refresh anyhow and get back up to speed, but it does seem kind of redundant that they would take bits of it in middle school and then back out of it and then jump back in in high school. It's kind of repeating things, and it seems a little bit wasteful with resources to me.
Well, that will probably come out in that self-study, so, thank you. So, a motion has been made and seconded to approve the new course proposals as submitted. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. I would then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. We are adjourned at 8:21. One minute late from what we...